Hey Jen, who's now playing tonight? I forgot.
I feel like I knew the answer to that right before you asked it. Um.
I'm asking, what? Hey Jen, who's now playing tonight? I forgot.
I don't know Gretchen, are you able to help us?
Yeah, I think.
The answer to that right before you asked it. Uh.
Feedback.
Are you guys having an echo feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. Alright.
Um, George is not here, Pete Waller is also not here.
Okay. Oh look, now I want to wait.
Sorry Marco, I tried to make you a co-host, I hit the wrong button.
Sure.
I think you're a co-host now though.
I am, and I found the button. Cool, well. This is it, right? We're here. All of us. And we're live. And we're recording, okay. Shall we do it? Let's do it. Okay, the time being six o'clock, I called to order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is June the 22nd, 2021. This is our regular meeting. And let's see, we are still coming to you via Zoom. So let's see, our webinar ID is 814-8903-2581. And you can get to us via the Zoom app, or if you need to call in with a cellphone or a phone. It is 1669-900-6833. And with that, Jen, could you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver. Commissioner Sipperly. Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Present.
Commissioner Wissing. Commissioner West.
Present.
And Commissioner Waller.
Alright, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. We'll move down the agenda and we'll start with item three on the agenda receipt of the minutes from the May 25th meeting. And I'm entertaining a motion to receive those minutes.
Do we do additions after that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Don't move.
Excellent, we got a motion, looking for a second.
A second.
Thank you, motion and a second, any discussion?
I just want to state that I did hear the, I went back and watched the video. And am caught up on the agenda items being discussed this evening.
Excellent, thank you, Commissioner White for letting us know. And Commissioner Schacter.
I would just like to perhaps interject a little detail, since I believe this is going to council for additional hearings. One would be on page two of the minutes. Where they talk about Mr. Rosenberg. And community housing, and I just wanted to add that, you know, there was no proposal or verbal commitment for affordable housing, for additional affordable housing in addition to the requirements, only that he would discuss with, be willing to discuss with commission. On page five of the minutes refers to something I said about small town, about the role of the community determining small town. I would like to add for clarity, I did, if not a direct quote, a paraphrase of Mr. Rosenberg, where he said in our presentation that this development would create a community, a small town in a modern day era. And my comment was, it's up to Glenwood to decide what a small town in a modern day era means, not a development or a developer. So I'd appreciate if we could add those details to the minutes.
Uh, thank you, Sumner. Commissioner Sipperly.
Uh, the only thing I noticed was the public comments on page four, the third line down, it was Greg Young, no name resident. It says Greg Jones.
Detailed, thank you, Commissioner Sipperly. Very good, so we're changing the minutes a little bit. Do we need to amend the motion? I think we probably should. Since we have some changes, to accept those changes to the minutes.
So I would move to approve the minutes as amended or added, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
And second, excellent, any more discussion? On the minutes? See none, now call for the question.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Wissing.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, Jen. Um, item number four, comments from citizens appearing for items that are not on the agenda. If you're here for anything else but the upcoming items that are listed on the agenda, please raise your hand. And I see none, as usual, so we'll close that. On item four, and we move on into the continued items. And let's see, our first item for tonight is, continued item for tonight is Planning File 09-21. And this is a minor site architectural plan review for addition of 11 multifamily units in a building that is currently vacant, and I think we need to promote a few people over, if you could, you're in the attendees list, if you could just raise your hand, if this is your item, this would be real easy. Excellent. Now I just have to promote the panelists, make sure that my software works here. Okay, did it, did it work? I have two of you, is that all we got tonight?
Marco, this is Gretchen, it might, it might be Candace Whipple would be the other, but she might, she is with that. Okay, very good.
That works great, so Gretchen, I think it's you, right?
It is, so just as a reminder, at the, at the last meeting, you all heard a staff presentation and the applicant's presentation, we answered a few questions that you had, and then you took public comment. Um, I do note that there was one member of the public that had trouble signing in, if you recall. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Um, I am recommending that you all approve the project, there's only one action item that you have to take, and that is consideration of the minor site architectural plan review for the addition of the 11 units in the Western Hotel, which is currently vacant, and then I'm recommending approval with findings and conditions that are on page eight. Uh, oh sorry, findings that are on page eight and suggested conditions that are on page eight and nine of your staff report. So I don't have any other presentation, but I should note for the record that I did not receive any additional public comment, either via, well, by any of the options that we gave people, email, dropping their comments, written comments off at the cities, one of the cities Dropbox, or by US Mail. So with that, I don't have a presentation, and we're here to answer any additional questions that you have.
Excellent, thank you Gretchen. Would you, Gretchen, I don't have the report, would you recall the name of the person that tried to log in?
Oh, he's the neighboring property.
Um, Steve, I forget his last name, but he's a neighboring property owner.
That's correct.
Okay, I don't see that name on the attendees list, but I'll call out anyway, is the neighbor by chance here, I'll open up the public portion again for him, or anybody else for that matter, but for him first, because it didn't work out last time. So I wanted to see if he's around. Uh, if any of the phone numbers is you, let me know. Raise your hand, that is on the phone, it's, what is it, star nine?
Yes.
Okay. And nobody's raising their hands, excellent, so we'll close the public portion for Planning File 0921. Gretchen said her piece, if you will, and does the applicant have anything they want to add? And you guys are muted. I'm not sure, still muted. Are you guys on the phone line to talk? Ah, which one, the 2324? The 9773? Or the 1832? The 1832? Can you, can you, is this it? Ask to unmute, you're still muted, so I think it's star, what is it to unmute, guys? Help me out with the phone. There you go.
Alright, excellent.
Alright!
Yeah, we, we called in because my wifi is going really slow, and in case we needed to really kind of explain anything, I didn't want to get all choppy, so I apologize for being confusing there.
No worries, we got it.
Yeah, it, it's been so long, I forgot what your question was. I'm just kidding. Uh, no, we don't, we don't have anything to add, uh, we're here to answer any questions, or if we need to run through any of the, uh, the presentation, we're happy to do that. Otherwise, we're, we're, we're good to go.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, back to the commission, any additional questions to the applicant or to Gretchen? Please raise your hand. And Commissioner White, please.
I had a couple questions, and, and maybe this first one is for Gretchen. Are there any sort of zoning requirements that would stipulate that the, the project needs a common space of any sort? For the residences?
That is an excellent question, I think, no, not in the downtown area. Common space is not, not required in the downtown zoning district, which is M2. But, sorry, no, 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 go ahead.
Uh, second question I had was maybe for the applicants. I, I know that sewer lines are always an issue downtown, have, and I didn't see that there was any requirement to improve those sewer lines. Are they, have you guys looked into those, and are they adequate for the 11 residences?
Um, we actually are going through that right now, we have civil engineer onboard, and Randy is meeting with the town to make sure that what is there is adequate, and I'm assuming if that is not the case, then we'll, we'll have to upgrade.
And then my last question was, I, I noticed in the engineering department's report, or recommendations, they stated that, that there would be repaving of both those alleyways, and that that might be a shared cost to the applicant. Is that something that's been decided, or, or are we putting that in as a recommendation at all, Gretchen?
Um, all of the engineering comments are part of the conditions of project approval, and to answer the first part of your question, the cost share has not been decided yet, so we'll need to discuss that with the engineering department further. And it would be then included or wrapped into the development agreement that gets signed for the project.
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, thank you, any other questions? No, see none? Um, then, in Planning File, let's see, Planning File 0921, consideration of a minor site architectural plan review um, for the addition of 11 multifamily units in a building that is currently vacant, I'm entertaining a motion uh, for action item number one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, uh, 0921 Minor Site Architectural Plan Review with findings on page eight and conditions on page eight and nine.
Thank you.
A second.
In a second, motion in a second, any, any further discussion on this item? And Commissioner Schacter, we'll start with you.
Um, I'm, I'm going to support the motion, but just to reiterate for the record, it was stated at the last meeting by one or more of the commission members, that it's an unfortunate thing that there is no inclusionary housing that would have been required under the current code, and it was also unfortunate, even though it's consistent with the historical use, that there's no retail space on the first floor.
Thank you, Commissioner White.
I hope I'm able to say this, um, I've been through the building, and it's a pretty, a couple of times, and it's a pretty hefty project, so I commend you guys for just moving forward and preserving the building as best you can. It seems, it seems like it's a good project.
Thank you, any other comments or discussion? Well, see none, my two cents, I'm just gonna kind of echo what Sumner said, I'm, I'm a little bit sad that we as a city are again, not ready for this project, I mean, we are for what you're gonna do with it, but I wish we were ready to say, hey guys, put some retail in the bottom, like we are internally talking in our workshops and in our other work sessions. Because it would have, it would have been just, it would have just helped with that streetscape there, to put a little life into it. But nonetheless, it's a great project, thank you for taking care of the Western, and with that, I will call for the question.
Uh, Commissioner Wissing.
Prove.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you Jen, uh, thank you Gretchen for your help, and thank you applicants, good luck with the project, and we'll watch it.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, we'll watch it come along, so, thanks guys, see ya.
Alright, take care.
Okay, so while we shift some stuff around here, let's see. Um. Okay, I will have to promote, uh, let's do this, next continued item is Planning Item, Planning File 16-21. Consideration of a variance from Article 0704, oh, 070040110, G4A4, and 070040110, I think it's an I, 3, to allow the installation of two signs in the RM1 residential medium density zone. And if you're here for this item, please raise your hand in the attendees list, and I will bring you over. And this is one. And this is both, I think you guys are both here, yes. Excellent, and I forget, is this Gretchen again?
It's me again.
Hi Gretchen, thank you.
Hi. Okay, very briefly, again, you heard for this item, staff and applicant owner presentations, and there were no, nobody from the public appeared to comment or discuss this project. And additionally, I did not receive any public comment during the month of the continuation. So you only have one action item before you, and that is consideration of the variance from the articles that Mark, the chairman, Dem, read, to allow the installation of two signs in the RM1 residential mediums, medium density zoning district to exceed the maximum number and the square footage allowance, and to illuminate one of the two signs. Uh, staff is recommending that you all approve the variance request with the findings and conditions that are on page, sorry. Uh. Looks like, uh, I don't know. Page six and seven of your staff report, sorry about that.
No worries, I'm still scrolling through the packet to find this item.
Oh, alright.
And could, would you by chance know what page in the packet it starts?
Uh, I don't have that called up.
Yeah.
Not, not the online version.
I wonder if there's a way to actually denote that, where the next item starts, because I'm scrolling like a madman, I can't find a thing. So anyway, um, thank you Gretchen.
Let me mute myself Marco, and I will take a look and see if I can't find.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Are you trying to find the report?
I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm in the packet, and it's like 7,000 pages, and I'm just trying to.
It's easier, it's easier to go in sometimes just on the detailed agenda, and then pull up that item, and then we've got the specific items.
You're right, in the meantime, I'm still scrolling, but I'm also trying to figure out what we're doing there, so, anyway, thank you Gretchen. Any questions to Gretchen at this point, from the commission? Uh, Commissioner Schacter.
Yeah Gretchen, do you know if the, I didn't notice when I was bicycling, has a non-compliant sign been taken down as discussed at the last meeting?
I'm going to defer to Glenda Oliver, the prince, oh, she's got a thumbs up.
I see the answer, I see the answer, thank you.
Uh, thank you, and I just did this, and look, everything is here, so excellent, thank you Sumner for the tip, and thank you for the question. Uh, any other questions to Gretchen at this point? No, we'll see none, great, would the applicant care to add something to the application or to the presentation?
I, I don't think we have anything else to add, other than what was presented last week.
Okay, excellent, then bring it back to the commission, any additional questions to the applicant? And we'll see none, and Gretchen, just to, to confirm, you didn't have any additional public comment, right?
I did not.
Did not, okay, so then we'll, since nothing changed, we'll just leave it alone, I will not reopen the public portion for this hearing. And I'll bring it back to the commission, I'm entertaining a motion, consideration of a sign variance um, in the RM1, and this is Planning File 26-2, uh, I'm sorry, 16-21. Uh, Commissioner Schacter.
Did nobody else raise their hand? Well then, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to put up a motion to deny the consideration of variance to allow the installation of two signs in the RM1 residential medium density zoning district. With the findings that this particular application does not meet our variance criteria in terms of exceptional property, in terms of the standards that the intent of the sign code, so it does not meet our, does not meet all seven of our variance requests, so for that reason, subject to discussion, I'm going to move to deny.
Alright, we have a motion to deny Planning File 1621?
I might add, if I, if I may add, for, and Gretchen, you might guide me, as a condition of this denial, I would grant the applicant the ability to, as they deem appropriate, to redo or modify or update their current sign of 28 square feet that exceeds the sign code requirements as they see as needed, albeit unlighted, but not to have to apply for any additional variance to redo those, that 28 square foot sign.
Okay, thank you, a motion to deny at this point, and I'm trying to read through this really quick. Uh, anyways, still need a second so we can discuss this, or if we don't get a second, we need to move on.
I can, well, it's my job of the night, I'll second, for sake of discussion.
Motion in a second, um, any discussion, please raise your hand. Commissioner Schacter.
Well, as you, as the commission well knows, and as the applicant, I'm, I'm very reluctant to approve any sign codes, matter of fact, I'd have very few signs in our whole town, but in this case, I believe, I heard, I heard the applicant, and first of all, I, I find it, the fact that you brought up that some people don't know the school is there, to me, I find a different issue than wayfinding, with great deal of respect. I don't think wayfinding to the school in this day and age of GPS located next to the church, your beautiful remodel, in a busy street and intersection is an issue, it may be a communication issue, but I don't believe it's a, in my opinion, a wayfinding issue. In the case of finding the way into the school in the evening, I would assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if there are evening events, that school will be pretty well lit, and again, it's in a very prominent location. And the sign that you already have, the 28 square feet is probably equal or greater to the way, the signage, the main signage for Valley View Hospital and the church next door. So I think that sign, square footage, it's already been allowed as a variance, unlit is, is adequate and still suitable as a variance, so for those reasons, I don't think there's a need to allow any additional variances in this case and in the RM1 zone, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Schacter, Commissioner White.
I, I was actually gonna weigh in, um, on the opposite end of the spectrum, I felt like the applicant did prove that they met the variance criteria. I also felt that, as Gretchen stated, though it is you know, it's surrounded by commercial zoning and that transitional residential zoning, so I feel like it fits with the adjacent businesses, in addition to that, the fact that it's been a longstanding business with signage felt, I, I felt compelled to, to approve it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner White, any other discussion?
Marco, if I may, um, yeah, with all due respect to Sumner, he can't actually condition a denial, it's just a denial. So.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, fair enough, we won't add that then. Commissioner Zippoli.
I would like to sort of side with Joy's point of view on this, I feel like the, it's a very large building. It doesn't resemble residences at all, and it's really not adjacent to the residential neighborhoods. I think that the sign size that they have proposed is, is proportional to the building faces that they'd be placed on, and I feel fairly assured that the illuminated sign will not be visible from any other residences. I think part of the issue is perhaps this property doesn't belong in the zone district that it's in, which is of course no fault of the applicant. And I am also leaning towards approving the signs.
Okay, thank you, any more discussion? I see none right now, but I do have a question for Gretchen, quick. How do we calculate the size of the, the signs again?
Um, well, for simple letter signs like this, you, you draw a rectangle around all the letters and you calculate the square footage in that manner.
And the rectangle you draw, does, does it have to have a distance to the letter, or is it tight to the letter?
It's tight to the letter.
Tight to the letter, and the square footage that it shows is calculated based on the facade length, the building length and height, or how does, how does it work?
Building frontage. So you get one, one square foot per lineal foot of building frontage.
And so for, for all this building, which is a very long building, all they get is, is that 28 square feet?
Well, no, I mean technically they could have, well, if this were in the appropriate zoning district, they could have that one square feet per lineal foot of building frontage. I had calculated, and it was in my staff report, that the size of the sign that they are requesting represents, I think it was less than 1% of that, of the facade.
Okay, so, so if it was a different zone, and this wouldn't be an issue?
Right, correct.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to hear one more time. Uh, thank you Gretchen, Commissioner Shaq.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be assuming there will be, even though there was a delay, another motion, I'd be glad to, with apparent lack of support, I would be glad to withdraw this motion if Amber's willing to withdraw her second and see if another motion emerges.
That sounds like a plan to me.
I'm fine with that also.
Okay, so, we have a withdrawn motion to denial in a second. So I will entertain a new motion in planning file 1621. Commissioner Zippoli, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the variance in planning item 16 dash 21 with the findings on page six and seven, and conditions on page seven.
Thank you, motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a second, excellent, any more discussion? Commissioner Shaq.
Uh, with Carl's approval, in this case, I would add a condition that the applicant, regardless, as subject to approval, the applicant also retains permission or ability to revise the existing 28 square foot sign that was given a variance to update it or redesign it not to exceed the existing square footage as they see necessary.
Okay, that confuses me, sorry, because there.
There's an, there's, there's an existing sign that was given a variance of 28 square feet. I, unless they don't need permission, Carl let me know, or somebody else, I'm just making sure they have the ability to make that sign more suitable if they choose to, and given that it was a variant sign and was already approved, I don't know if they have that ability to just go ahead and change it.
Okay, so now all you have to do, and since this has been a month, and I don't remember all of it, this has nothing to do with these two new proposed sites.
It does not. Again, I guess you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's an indirect, it's indirectly related to the sign, signage, I don't know whether, I, I would defer to Carl whether this has to be addressed or not.
I, I don't think it needs to be addressed, and I don't know that it's appropriate in this particular application too.
Okay, then ignore it.
We're really good at ignoring you Sumner, it's really good. Commissioner Zippoli, please.
I sure have nothing against keeping the directional sign, although I, I am in agreement that now is maybe not the time, and if we had decided to put that in as a condition, it would kind of negate one of the conditions that we've already moved to approve with suggested condition five prior to the issuance of sign permit, take down the other sign, and I think they said they already have taken it down, probably in good faith of anticipating this evening's approval, so.
Right. But we. At this point, we're looking at the approval of the two new signs on the building. So let's stick to that. Is there any more discussion? Okay, the only thing I have is what Gretchen explained to me just a few minutes ago makes complete sense. I don't think it's anybody's fault, the zoning they're in, this building has been there for a long time, the remodel looks fantastic, and it, yes, needs new signs, so let's make the signs look like the building, fantastic, and let's move on, and with that, I will call for the question.
Commissioner Whissing. Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaq.
No.
Commissioner Zippoli.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Dom.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you Jen, thank you Commissioner Gretchen, and thanks to the applicant. And looking forward to seeing the illuminated one, I like those signs, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sumner, you had your hand up, is there, was there anything else you wanted to? Nope, you're good, excellent. Um, that was our last continued item for this evening, and we're moving into agenda item six, new items for tonight. And, let's see here, let's do the planning file 5820, consideration of a major site architectural plan review for construction of a 36 unit multifamily building. And I have two, again, let's see, we're gonna bring Hannah over. And anybody that's here for that, please raise your hand, Richard Myers. Oh. Come on. And there you go, Bob Moore. And Haley. Okay, did I get everybody? This is for Keith, is Keith, is Keith part of your team?
Yes, I'm not sure if he's on or not.
He's right here, I just don't see a last name, so I wanted to make sure it's, you know,
Yes.
the Keith that you guys need.
Yeah, he's our architect.
Awesome, there he is, and I assume since Hannah's here, this is yours?
Yes, it is.
Awesome, hi Hannah.
Hi, everyone, thank you Chair Dom and Planning and Zoning Commission. Happy to be back with an actual planning item with you guys tonight. Um, so planning file 5820, as you just mentioned, this is development for Lofts, phase four. This includes a major site and architectural plan review, a special use permit and a variance within that, so I will start sharing my screen, I do have a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight. Everyone seen that, okay? Perfect. From the beginning. Alright. So a little bit on the process that's involved in this planning item. Planning and Zoning Commission will be a recommending body tonight on the major site and architectural plan review. That includes any development that has 25 or more new dwelling units, in this case, we have 36. The decision-making body is Planning and Zoning Commission for the special use permit and the variance, and City Council will be the final decision-making body on the major site and architectural plan review, and city staff will lead the applicant through final plans prior to the building permit application. Um, I've included a plan, a, a picture here, we've had a lot of development in this area, so there is quite a bit of background. As I mentioned, this is phase four of Lofts at Red Mountain. Phase three is currently being constructed, so the building is not represented in that image, but you can see phases one and two, the five buildings there, and phase four, which we are discussing tonight, is adjacent to phase three. And you can see the different years that those have been coming in, and the unit counts that they've come in at. And Lofts phase four is going to be 36 units in similar style building, four stories with underground parking. So the current proposal, three stories of residential and a lower, lower level parking garage. The building footprint is approximately 9,400 square feet. This will include three levels that are 36 multifamily residential apartments. It is a mix of studio and one bedroom predominantly, with a couple of two-bedroom units as well sprinkled in there. They're adding some private common areas, which I will go into a little bit later when we talk about open space, as well as doing some landscaping improvements. This is an image of the zoning area, as you can see, this is the, so GMZDP, which is going to be used a lot, and it's used a lot in the staff report, is the Glenwood Meadows zoning and development plan. This is the document that regulates development in this area. So this is parcel H within Glenwood Meadows that we're talking about, designated as commercial. And for city purposes, it is zoned mixed-use core or M2 zoning. And the property is highlighted there in blue, you can see that it's just off of one of the roundabouts there on East Meadows Drive. So talking a little bit about the open space that's coming in here, as dictated by the Glenwood Meadows Development Standards, 15% open space is required. Glenwood Meadows has met open space requirements from previous developments and previous improvements that have been created, hiking and biking trails, pedestrian infrastructure along Midland Trail, and the transfer of community center property, so their open space requirements actually have been met. With that said, the applicant is proposing some private amenities that do count towards open space as well. And that includes a fitness room, a club room, a large rooftop patio and outdoor area with a fire pit, and outdoor seating, and also a raised amenity terrace that includes a spa and outdoor seating, which also includes a swimming pool and a hot tub. There's bicycle storage in the lower level parking garage, they have 18 spaces down there, as well as some general storage. So all that said, as far as what they're providing, in addition to what has been met with the Glenwood Meadows development, 2,400 square feet of open space, which is approximately 6% of the site. Our next favorite topic is parking. So this particular project with 36 residential units, as all the commissioners are very well aware, our parking standards dictate 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit with an additional one space for every five units for guest parking. So that equates to 62 total spaces, or approximately 1.7 spaces per unit. The applicant is meeting that standard, so they have, they are providing 62 parking spaces. 19 of those spaces are located in the lower level garage parking. Um, in addition, 21 existing on-street parking spaces along Wolfson Road are allocated for this parcel, so that goes into their parking count. And then finally, they have another 22 surface spaces, eight of which will be new constructed with this development, and 14 are existing in the parking lot now on this parcel. So in, I did want to point out, in this application, there is there is mention of the future commercial pad site that the, that the applicant is proposing down the line. That doesn't, as we don't know what that parking is going to be required, those requirements will come in with that application at that time. And staff has had multiple conversations with the applicant, talking about what may need to happen at that time, depending on the use. Converting some of this parking to compact spaces and a redesign of that area may be warranted. But currently, they are meeting the parking requirements for their residential units with 62 spaces, as outlined in the staff report. Um, along with parking, this development submitted a traffic impact study, and it also mentions that this is, the traffic impact study is for 36 residential units, as well as a future commercial site that is assumed for the purposes of this study to be a fast casual restaurant. I did want to call that out, because if you took the time to meticulously go through the traffic report, which I hope you do, there is the large number of trips associated, roughly 2,000. But the majority of that is the future fast casual restaurant, and not the actual residential trips associated with the 36 dwelling units. The 36 dwelling units came to 196 daily trips. You can see I've listed the AM peak hour trips and PM peak hour trips that are estimated for this development. And that study made some recommendations for some improvements for merging lanes along East Meadows Drive onto Midland, and also the existing merge lane, the tapered merge lane that exists at the intersection of Wolfson and Midland Avenue. And staff has included those in the recommended conditions for you. Um, so this is some image of the development elevations, and this is the commercial area C1 within Glenwood Meadows. And the building design is very similar to City of Glenwood Springs Municipal Code in that it dictates specific architectural features that must be incorporated into every, every 25 horizontal feet of the building. And the applicant did include exterior elevation colors that are going to be the exact same as Lofts phase three, so that is a picture of their Lofts phase three rendering, which is the exact same that's going to be for this building. And they do have changes in color, texture, the wall plane, a little bit of roof height, and they also are providing balconies and some canopies. Excuse me. I haven't talked this much in a while. So as part of this development, the applicant is requesting a special use permit review. The permit review is required for building heights that exceed a maximum of 40 feet. And this particular development, given the grade, as it is going to exceed the 40 feet level and have, they're requesting a 60-foot proposal that goes to the north side of the building. Um, I've included in the staff report, as well as here, the approval criteria for Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to the special use permit. The first one being that the use is compatible with the surrounding area. The first slide that I showed you was the background of the Lofts development, which this is the fourth phase. And so this is very similar to special use permit requests from the other phases. Um, and so the building heights are going to be the same, so they will be, it's very similar to the multifamily residential developments, and equal to those heightened dimensions to their neighboring phases. And also in the Glenwood Meadows Development Plan, there is some language that includes identifying a need for greater heights along Wolfson Road due to that grade change as it, as it slopes down towards the commercial sites. Second criteria, the impacts of the use on surrounding areas has been adequate, adequately mitigated. And staff does believe that this has been met due to building height. There, in the development, we have large streets, pedestrian-oriented sidewalk widths, and several building architectural elements that reduces the impact of this building height, similar to the other ones that have been passed before. The use will be consistent with the general purpose and intent. This is, as identified in the staff reports, rather lengthy explanation there, efficient development and infill development, compatible design, and also addresses impacts. The use will comply with all applicable standards of this code, so it does meet all City of Glenwood Springs code, as well as the Glenwood Meadows zoning and development plan. The use is in conformance with the comp plan, I've included all the ways. The use is in conformance with the comp plan. I've included all the ways that comp plan goals are supported by this particular development and this particular building height request. Went way too far there. Um, see here. Sorry about this. Finger's got. There we go. There we go. So the use minimizes adverse impacts to the health and safety and welfare of the public. Complex. So in short, staff is supporting the special use permit review and is recommending approval for a P and Z. The next section, the variance that I mentioned, is for building length. So Glenwood Meadows zoning development plan, I can't say that acronym for some reason, GMZDP, require, or requires a variance for any building length that exceeds a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five feet. The proposal includes a building that exceeds that by fifteen feet, so is a hundred and forty feet long along that East Meadows section of this development. The approval criteria is included here as well. Subject property has an exceptional shape, topography, or configuration. Staff has noted the grade difference, and many of these conditions are very similar to phase three that has the exact same conditions as they're along that same site there. A great difference of thirteen feet as you move from Wolfson north. And also some hydro-compactive soils that are requiring some additional engineered foundation aspects up to sixty-five feet. And similar to phase three, a continuous shoring system along Wolfson Road that's going to be required as part of the building. The strict application of code standards would produce undue hardship. We are, staff is agreeing to this regarding exceptional shape and topography. Also, the area necessary to excavate and construct the foundation. And also the stability of the entire building is increased by being interconnected. The applicant did not create the hardship by his or her own actions. The items that we mentioned above, the grade and the site definitely were not created by the applicant. And the variance does not harm the public or impair the intent and purposes of this code, goals, and policy. This is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the code regarding natural hazards, efficient development, compatible design. The maximum building length located in the residential subsection of the GMZDP is identified here. Neither, the other sections that are included in GMZDP don't limit the height like this. This is just for a particular section, so other, other buildings are able to be longer, and so this will match in that, in that regard. So the variance request demonstrates exceptional hardship not related to purposes of convenience or financial burden. And the requirement to allow development of the site in the manner intended by the GMZDP. The variance requested will not violate building or fire code. It does not. And the variance is the minimum that will afford relief of the subject standards. Applicant is only requesting fifteen feet from, from the limitation, so staff does believe that this is the minimum necessary for this particular development. And finally, the site and architectural plan review approval criteria, staff has included this in the report. I've also listed it here. Consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code is consistent with the dimensional design, development, and all other standards of this code. As I've mentioned, this is consistent with our code as well as the GMZDP standards. Is consistent with any previously approved plat, PUD, or other precedent land use approval. And the site and architectural plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted city policies and plans. I've included an image here from our comp plan that designates the area as commercial and secondary commercial center. And also the numerous community goals that are related and related objectives that are met by this development. Staff did send this out to our referral agencies. I've included in your packet comments from the engineering department. And also at time of the meeting, staff did not receive any comments from the public or adjacent property owners. So with that, action items one through three and staff recommendation. Per city code, we have an approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue. I do believe that per our recent policy, we will be continuing the item to the next planning and zoning commission for you guys to make an actual recommendation. But I'll go through what staff is proposing, and then we can get to the applicant. So staff is recommending approval of all three items, which includes the special use permit is item one, the variance is item two. And those findings are on page thirteen and fourteen of the staff report or page one hundred and thirty-four or one hundred and thirty-five of your packet. I remembered to take a look there. And staff is also recommending approval with conditions to City Council of Action Item Three, the major site and architectural plan review with findings and conditions on page fourteen to fifteen of the staff report or one hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and thirty-six of the packet. And I do have slides that include the conditions that staff has included for that item three that we can look at if needed. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant. I have all of the application materials. Should Planning and Zoning Commissioners want to look at particular items that I can bring up and share my screen if that's necessary. So thank you very much. And with that, I will stop sharing and turn it back over to you, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Hannah. Very good. Before we, before we get the applicants going here, any questions at this point from what we've seen from Hannah Commissioners? Commissioner White, please.
I, I forgot where my unmute was. Hannah, I was not a part of the, the process with the other phases. And you stated that similar special use permits and variances were, were seen. Did they, did they all have an increase in height and length requested?
I know for certain phase three, and I'm fairly certain, phase three had both the same special use permit and the variance. So they had the building height and they had the building length. I know phase one and two were also exceeding in building length. I'm not entirely certain on building height, but I bet the applicant could. Or.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thanks, Hannah. This is Richard Myers, one of the partners on development. Yes, with all the, all the phases had height and length of variances.
Great. And then were, were any of those past phases, did, were there, was there underground parking on those, or is this unique to this?
We were putting underground parking in phase three. So then that's adjacent to this, this obviously phase four. It's more expensive both for phase three and four, but we thought that the market would really like that. Because we have what we call tuck-under parking on phases one and two. There's some garages that go under the actual building, but they're little private garages, but it's not a big parking garage, so there's more demand for underground parking than, than we thought, basically. So that's why we're trying to do that in phase three and four.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Rissing, please.
My name was just a quick question. What's a fast casual restaurant? Is that like something like Chili's?
Yeah, so it's a little different. It's not your drive-through fast restaurant. It's, it's a little bit more, what was the, I forget some of the examples that were thrown out, but you're, you're on the right track there.
All right. Excellent. See no more questions at this point, then we'll, oh, Commissioner Schacter, questions to staff, please.
Thank you. I, a question. It, it's an observation for Hannah. When you talk about the SUP and the variance request, Hannah, I might at least ask or consider that maybe you remove small-town character as one of the criteria. Particularly for a development like the Meadows, it looks like we've created an urban zone, and I'm not judging good or bad, but I'm not sure we want to use small-town character. There are plenty of other criteria you've listed that, that would apply. Just an observation as much as a possible suggestion. And secondly, and it might also have to deal with the applicant, when we talk about particularly the length variance and hardship to the applicant and, and, and things like that, how much of this in Europe, maybe you could tell us, how much of this is purely a density issue that, and, and an economic issue that this thing could comply with the length if the applicant chose to have fewer units? Is that not correct?
Interesting, somewhat leading question there, Sumner. Thank you. I think I will let the applicant respond to that question in their section regarding, regarding the density question that you posed.
So, so I see that the questions are kind of mingling between staff and applicant. So maybe if it's okay with you, Sumner, and Commissioner White, who has their hand up, that we let the applicant present. And then we'll, we'll just restate some of the questions, then we can actually do this formally. Okay, that said, applicant, please present your, your item and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, this is Richard Myers with Realty Capital Management. We're partners with Stonely Development on the project and we thank Mr. Chairman and the entire Planning and Zoning Commission for working with us over the years. We first started working on the Lofts back in about two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. So we're in about eight to nine years of this and we're phase four is the final phase. And we're really thank you for obviously working with us over the years, and we're fairly proud of what we've accomplished there. As one that live half-time in the Roaring Fork Valley, and I know the, the issues with housing and housing shortage, and we've been able to provide a tremendous amount of workforce housing with the Lofts. And I've looked at a recent report on our folks that live in the Lofts, and it's, I think it's kind of classic community workforce housing. We have carpenters, teachers, nurses, bank tellers, bus drivers, city employees, even, even baristas. And so it's a really neat of all the residents that I've met. It's a neat cross-section of folks in the Roaring Fork Valley, and it definitely is helping with the, with the housing issue there. The, to the commissioners, Schacter, your question about the length of the building, it's, it is fifteen feet over the the hundred and twenty-five. We've had buildings approved up to three hundred feet long, so this is obviously a fairly short addition. The what this really, the ability to go just the extra fifteen feet with the, the grade and the pile foundation, it, it enables us to create a slightly better and more efficient parking garage that gets more spaces. And we can still do the same number, if we cut fifteen feet off the building, we could still do the same number of units, but it would, those units would be placed in, we would effectively reduce the amenities and the open, even the private open space that's between buildings three and four. If you look at that plan, there's this beautiful, we're going to do a really neat terrace between buildings three and four. And, you know, I'd rather not have to squish that for the, for the thirty-six units, and particularly to only have fifteen more feet, I think. It's a small request for a, a great benefit. I think you'll be very proud of how phase four and three work together, and it, I think it'll be a beautiful project. And really, almost every building Glenwood Meadows, the, the commercial ones, the residential ones are all longer than a hundred and twenty-five feet. So just from a scale standpoint, this will actually look and feel like, I think, one of the smaller buildings in, in all of Glenwood Meadows. So it's really more, I think, of a, of a quality issue than a economic one. And of course, we could split the, the buildings in theory, but when we're doing these, you, when you do a parking garage, you know, you really have to do it underground, a continuous garage, otherwise it's almost impossible to, to do with these grades. And then you'd have this narrow passageway that would be kind of very dark shaded, you know, become snowy and icy in the winter. Also, that tends to create leaks on the garage below, so because it's open to the elements, and when you just have a terrace on top of a garage, those invariably leak, you know, leak over, over the years. So that would be kind of a negative from a quality standpoint, too. That's sort of another rationale for it. And I'm certainly available for any other questions, too.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioner? Commissioner Schacter, I'll start with you.
Of course. Richard, thank you for your explanations. My other question were is regard to the Lofts report that you referred to. Do you have data, I am regarding, I know also there's some retirees in the Lofts as well to add to your mix of
That's true.
Yeah. Diversity. But did your report also indicate where the workforce housing works? How many of them are actually Glenwood-employed versus, say, Up Valley-employed? Did you get an indication of that in the report?
Yes, we have, the report lists literally where every single person works. So you know, they're just, there's a lot of Glenwood employees, but there's also, I've got their City of Aspen employees, you know, FedEx workers. You know, there's even some unemployed folks. You know, just, there's a, quite a variety, but.
I'm just wondering without, and I, I didn't go through all eight hundred pages. Is that, is that report available to us in the, in this?
No, it's not. It's, you know, there's a lot of confidential data that we collect, you know, when we have the tenants.
You have a rough es, can you provide, maybe not even now or our next meeting, a rough estimate of how many workers are actually Glenwood-based versus, like you said, Up Valley and elsewhere, just without any breach of confidentiality, not who, but just a rough percentage at some point would, might be helpful for this and the future, Richard. Thank you.
You bet. Yeah, we'll put that together as best, best we can.
And my other question, of course, is either of you can reply. No inclusionary housing because this application came in prior to the new code revisions, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you're up.
Sumner answered or asked one of the questions I had, and it was about the inclusionary housing. But I, I was curious. I know these are all investor-owned. Is there any sort of plan to phase these out as, as for-sale properties, condominiumize them and sell them? And is that anything you guys have done in your experience as an investor?
We have we've done both. We, we have developed for-sale condominiums and, and, you know, for-sale housing. I'd say most of what we do is, you know, rental housing like this. But this is, the quality of this is such that one could certainly, if they wanted to create a condominium, it's not that difficult and then sell each individual unit. We do think that, you know, when we looked at this, started looking at this almost 10 years ago, we felt like Glenwood Springs and really the whole roaring fork valley was short. You know, it's short of housing in multiple ways, as you know, but it's definitely short of really desperately short of rental housing. And so and and that's proven because we've stayed virtually 100% full even during the pandemic. And you know, we were wondering what was going to happen, but you know, people like the quality and and obviously being the Glenwood Meadows area by the near the community center and all that, it's really a very good location. But every community needs some mix. And because, you know, not everybody wants to own a house and owning a home can be pretty expensive with down payments and maintenance and things like that. And so that's why we did this, but it could certainly be turned into a condominium. But we don't have any plans immediately for that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Zippelley, please.
Thanks. I have a few questions about the the architecture itself. I was wanting to compare phase three to phase four and I found a 3.3, which is the section. And as I was recalling, since I was on the commission when we did phase three, that was more or less a three story building and this proposal is a four story building. It's nearly a whole floor taller than phase three next to it, like at least a half of a floor. And that is probably in part because you've got 12 foot ceilings way up top, which admittedly would be nice with the views there and all. But this is presenting a really tall facade to the main entrance street. The sections are the elevations are also telling in that it seems as though you've achieved changes in roof height by tacking on the little awnings around the building. And of course, where the roof garden is kind of carved out of the mass, but if you look at those elevations, other than those awnings, it it really does present as a fairly monumental facade. And I'm a little bit concerned about that when the other buildings also on a slope read more as three story buildings as opposed to four story buildings.
Commissioner, you're correct in that the phase three, it's forced, it's three stories on top of the garage. Phases one and two, which is obviously the the majority of the project are, those are four story buildings. And so they actually are much, if you're standing on Wolfson, they are much taller because they're going up the hill than this building. And and phase three, of course, you're right, is is three stories, but it's also, I think, over 300 feet long. This is much shorter. We also left open the the whole corner on the intersection of East Meadows and the entry to Glenwood Meadows for a one story commercial building. We hope to get a restaurant there. I think that'd be neat. Even the traffic study shows a 6,000 foot restaurant that it's not going to be that large. That's a crazy big restaurant. But but I think really it's, it'll actually feel and there's a nice space that terrace in between three and four is very nice, so that drops down to one level there. So I think, I think it'll be a nice feel to it, actually. Nice look.
Well, for the residents of the building for sure, but in looking at the site plan, you know, that terrace is, well, you can kind of see through it like a portal, but it's 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 not available to the public, right? It's for residents of this housing area.
That that's correct. It's just, if you're on Wolfson, though, it's nice to have that large gap like that in between the buildings.
Yeah, yeah, I I agree with that, having having that green space interrupt these two and the previous buildings approved were were quite long and I appreciate this one is is not quite as long. I also do like the underground parking aspect. One thing I noticed down there in the parking garage, though, there's only five storage units and I'm sure you're aware, people around here have lots of toys, boats, bikes, things like that. So where are all those, where are all those things gonna be stored?
We the we're working on additional, you know, kind of, we have storage on some of the floors. I don't know if you have all the floor plans, but we have some storage on here and there on some of the floors, too. But, you know, we are keenly aware of of the the need, especially for bike parking. In fact, on phase one and two, we dedicated it, there's different storage you know, private storage closet, then we had dedicated a whole garage to end up bicycles. So you could effectively with racks on the walls and that was so popular, we did another one like that. And so we know that basically making room for especially bikes and things like that is is the key to having a successful project, so.
It is for sure. I am, I'm, as we're talking, going through these drawings and I'm seeing, I would have to say rather undersized closets and I don't see the storage areas you're talking about. It might still be something you have in progress. And maybe this should be directed to Hannah, but does this project meet our storage requirements?
Sorry, I was just gonna pull up the sheets. Yes, we did find that it meets the city standard code for storage requirements per unit.
Okay, and that storage is not necessarily in the units?
No, it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
And just if I could make one other comment on the unit sizes. Though, these are actually fairly large unit size, the one bedrooms are 720 square feet. If a typical one bedroom apartment across the US would average more like probably five to 10% smaller, like 650 or so. And the studios are 500 to 530 square feet and there's a lot of studios in the roaring fork valley that are much smaller than that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm just trying to picture a kayak in the kitchen and how do you get it up the elevator? All right. Thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any additional questions? No, we'll see none. Hannah, just quickly, has anybody raised the concern of the condition of Wolfson? Did that come up at all with the additional traffic? That we really should be, I don't think that road can be repaired, it should be rebuilt correctly is is that a topic of discussion or not?
That definitely did not come up in comments from engineering, which would be the department that would bring it up.
So it, because I just drove it today and I'm like, hmm. Should we have more cars down here?
If I could interrupt, the phase three development and Bob Moore, my colleagues online can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm almost certain the phase three development agreed with the with the city to redo parts of Wolfson.
At least in front of your building.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I don't remember that from, well, maybe we'd never heard that aspect of it when we did phase three, when we heard phase three, so that's actually good to know. And I think that was it. The other one I'll save for next month, I think, so. Commissioner White, please.
Just have one more quick question. We've all seen commercial spaces in the Meadows stay vacant for a while. Do you, are you, are you guys acquiring the restaurant? Or is that something that's just going to be completed and then it'll be up for lease?
The, when you say the restaurants, you mean this, the space that we're not building next, that's part of our lot or parcel?
The, I thought the fast dine in restaurant was, you're not building that.
No, that's just a
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, we're we're going to look for a restaurateur to build a restaurant there.
Okay, okay, got it.
That would be, that's our number one use because it, our tenants historically, when we put had restaurants adjacent to or part of our developments, the that it's a great amenity.
Got it. I I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. Yeah.
Thank you. Jen?
I was just going to say that Jessica Bowser is in the audience and she may have had something to add to the Wolfson. The the condition of the road discussion.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Jessica, do you have something to add? I see you here. Do you wanna, if you, if you do, please raise your hand. Oh, you do. Okay.
Good evening. Hannah just asked me to listen in tonight, but yes, we're aware of the condition of Wolfson. We've been talking to Matt about that as well as Jen and Terry and Carl are involved in that conversation. It's more of a global issue that this development alone cannot solve. But yeah, it does need reconstruction. It's not going to be a cheap, cheap project, definitely not.
What is it on the books?
I am not sure. It is not high on our priority list because it was a deficient street when it was built.
I can chime in a little bit, Marco. So it is a city street. We are trying to work on a couple of funding solutions along with help on the intersections that we've been working towards as well. So we're doing the best we can. But as you know, there are lots of priorities in the community and a limited amount of funds to get all that work done in capacity within both our public works as well as our engineering department to simply manage the number of projects that we have going on.
Thanks, Carl.
Somewhere on a list. I just also figured it was not on top of the list, but.
It is on, there are, I don't know, 100 and some odd lane miles on that list, I think. So yes, there is a list.
Okay, there's a list. I figured, I just, well, it was encouraging to hear the applicant say that they are part of involved and maybe that's true. I don't know. Anyway, Commissioner Schacter, please. Thank you, Jessica, by the way.
Well, since we have Jessica here and as well as a developer, this is an observation as well as anecdotal from other people. We're going to have more traffic, there's no question, and and it's not the developers issue directly, but perhaps between the developer and the city. Anecdotally and observationally, the, is it Market Street or the that comes into Wolfson? That left hand turn is not completely safe. I have observed and others has observed people missing the lane and making a left turn into the directional west lane rather than going to the sec, past the second divider. So I would just hope that between the developer and Jessica, perhaps look at some way perhaps to observe whether that particular left hand turn could be made safer, particularly as we have more traffic. Thank you.
Yeah, I can talk to Terry about some ideas there. I don't, this, this application is not directly accessing Market Street. They're more likely, the traffic report showed them accessing West Meadow or East Meadows and Wolfson more than that particular intersection. So I think that's more of an internal solution.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks to all. Any other questions to the applicant or staff at this point? No, we'll see none. Then I will open the, Jessica, I'm gonna cut you off for just a second. Thank you. I'm gonna open the public portion of this hearing and invite anybody to give us your comments, your concerns. So if you are listening in, please raise your hand. And I see nobody, so I will close the public portion for tonight for planning file 1621. As we have been doing and we will be doing for at least another month or two. If you do have comments and you weren't able to attend tonight, you can drop your written comments off in the utility pay box at City Hall. You can send it to Hannah and Hannah, your email is?
My first name Hannah dot last name Klausman at C O G S dot U S. And just for, I believe you are closing the public comment on planning item 58 dash 20.
Of course I am. Thank you, Hannah. Of course I am. I'm looking at the continued hearing. So yes, thank you. Or you can also mail your your comments to City Hall. And I'm not, again, I'm not attempting the address like every other meeting I've been to in the last few months, so. It's somewhere on Eighth Street. Anyway, at this point, I'm entertaining a motion to continue item 5820.
A second.
I haven't heard the motion yet.
I'm not gonna make the motion. I botched that.
Come on, it's easy.
Well, I'll do it. I move to continue planning item 58 dash 20, major site architectural plan review until the next meeting.
And the special use permit and the variance.
Yes, and action items one, two, and three on the permit being the special use permit, the variance and the major site architectural plan review.
And the next meeting is July 27.
27.
Okay, we have a motion to continue planning item 5820.
I will appropriately second that motion now.
Awesome. Thank you. Motion and a second. Very nice. Any other discussion? Before we, now, okay, I'll call for the question.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Zippelley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Wissing.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen. Thanks to the applicants for being here tonight and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good time.
Uh, let's see, so everybody is logging out. And Commissioner Wissing, your hands up.
It's just me requesting our mid five minute thing.
I can do that. Call five minute recess. I'll see you at 7:31, 7:32. I can do that. Uh, call five-minute recess. I'll see you at seven thirty-one, seven thirty-two. All right, welcome back to the second half of the City Limit Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, we are moving into planning file eighteen twenty, no, yep, eighteen twenty-one. Consideration of Planning and Zoning Commission Bylaws.
Good evening, uh Chair and members of the commission. Um, I'm here this evening to to present this item. Uh, we had talked a little bit about these bylaws in the past. Um, we had talked about uh just. Really essentially changing the time of the meetings to reflect your current schedule. Since then, and since that it was in the packet, um, there are a few things that I'd like to additionally amend. Um, if you're willing, um, the deadline for the agenda is listed as twenty or as filing applications. As twenty-one days prior to the public hearing, we do require eight weeks um prior. So eight weeks of middle time prior to um the public hearing. So that is something that I missed in my first uh round through. Um, also, I I would like to maybe um get rid of the uh reference to the cassette tape recordings. Um, and with that, I'm um open to any questions that you may have uh about these um. These bylaws, and we can certainly bring it back, do a little bit more um work out of if we want. We did talk last time. About not changing the meeting shall not continue past eleven P M. And no agenda item would be taken up after ten P M. So I think we talked about that a little bit last time. I think the direction was to keep it as is. Um, and as I say, I'm happy to answer other other questions about the bylaws.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Jen. Uh, any questions from the commission? Let's start with Commissioner Zipperly, please.
Thanks. Um, I went through and um highlighted some things on a PDF, so I'll go through them. Some of them, it just uh seemed like it was worded kind of strangely, so forgive me if I'm being a chronic editor. Um, the first one under time limit, it says unless approved by the unanimous vote of the commission when the agenda is being prepared. So like, we don't vote on things when the agenda is being prepared. Um, so I just not, I'm not sure what. What that's getting at. Do we do this?
Yeah, maybe you can mention the uh paragraph or the uh.
Under meetings, one, a time limit.
It says it right there.
Uh, unless approved by the unanimous vote of the commission when the agenda is being prepared.
And I think it is intended to say. Um.
There's a period in there.
Unanimous vote of the commission.
At the meeting. Dur- during the meeting, whether or not we're gonna extend it, right?
Right.
Okay.
Carolyn, there's a period in there that breaks that up. Um, when the agenda is being prepared is a whole different. Phase that involves discussion of staff and the chairperson.
It's interesting when we converted it from the um. The the scanned copy that we have, it must not have gotten picked up.
There are some odd parentheses written out too, so I figured some of that might just be a like translation things.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the next.
There was lots of weirdness, but we thought we cut it all. We apologize.
Oh, oh, no, I've highlighted it. Things like meetings. I know you mean meetings to be plural, two meetings. Um, but under be regular meetings towards the bottom of that paragraph, upon constant consultation with the chairperson. Not all night long, Marco.
All week, the whole month, that's fine.
Um, scrolling down to the next page and I am looking at the um, the more typed up, not the Xerox copy, E special meetings. The bottom of that paragraph, such meeting shall be called upon twenty-four hours notice. So basically, no less than twenty-four hours notice. Like. If the meeting's at six, we don't get a call at six o'clock the day before, precisely twenty-four hours, right?
Right.
Semantics.
At least twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Um, the next item I had was um. It kind of to do with requirements of the people um, uh, our planet, our us as commissioners and the other. People listed. Um, I saw, and I don't actually have. That uh section here, but it was saying that alternates are required to attend work sessions. Now in here, it doesn't really say that any of the commissioners are required to attend anything, meetings, work sessions, anything. So. We might wanna either require us all to be there and of course provide some exceptions. Um, you know, require us all commissioners and alternates to be at meetings and to be at work sessions. Um, scrolling down under membership and officers, B. One, item D. I'm just not, I think this is another translation oversee compliance with Old North here in municipal code. That's gotta be a translation thing. Um, at the bottom.
Can you tell me again where that is?
Uh, under membership and officers.
Yep.
Down below, um. B duties of officers. One chairperson, item D, compliance with Old North here in municipal code provisions.
Huh.
Um, in the.
All rules set forth here in.
Yes.
I think that's what it did. And later on, I figured you must have used a, as I was going through like a special translator thing, because the under recording secretary, not only cassette tape, which you mentioned. But under three C is kind of cute, a verb, eight, a transcription. Um. Skipping over the semantics down to item five deadline for agenda. Um, I was questioning in the event a request for continuance is not made in a timely manner. In strict compliance with these rules and application must be presented at the meeting. So are we meaning that they were supposed to turn us things in fifteen days, but if they don't, they can just show up with their. Stuff. Um. Again, under item five deadline for agenda.
And I think that isn't our practice. I think if somebody has a reason that they need a continuance. We generally, we would just set it, ask you to set it over. So um, I think that should also be adjusted.
So you're referring to an application for a continuance. They don't have to show up and ask for a continuance. They can ask you guys and we'll just continue it, right?
Yeah, that's typically.
I think what it's saying is that they have, if they don't ask for the continuance, then they have to, we, you have to hear it.
Okay. But we're okay with you hearing it and them not having to make the effort, especially if it's in person, right?
No, I think what it's asking is that they have to come and present their item.
Okay, even if it's to show up and ask for a continuance.
I don't think that's what it says. Carl, am I wrong?
I mean, it's not what it says, but I think that the usual practice is if somebody asks for a continuance, um, ask staff regardless of the timing on that. Typically, we present it to you guys as, hey, the applicant requested a continuance. We're recommending that you you go ahead and continue it. If they don't talk to us as staff, they need to show up and ask you for that continuance because. They can't, if they just don't show up, we'll ask for, you know, a move to deny the application, right?
Okay, so this is referring to an application for a continuance. They will come to the meeting if they didn't do it two weeks in advance.
Right. And really, our practice is any time in advance. It's nice to be able to publish the agenda with the notation that it's being continued.
Yeah.
But.
I read that like Jen said, though, if they have not requested the continuance, then this is stating. That they're required to show up and present their application, right? Isn't that how that's reading?
That's how it reads. I'm not sure that that's how we actually have dealt with it in practice.
But it should be rewritten.
Or.
Yeah.
Um, the next little one is I'm sure that we do accept uh. Uh, things that are addressed to this planning and zoning commission. It doesn't have to say attention chairperson. It might even say attention P and Z, and I think that would be okay. You know, if we're making rules, I think that would be acceptable to me if they don't write it all out. I have no doubt that you are forwarding us all uh relevant correspondence. Um. Scrolling down under uh nine rules to ensure fairness for public hearings, a couple pages down. I'm looking at D one. Right after that little E I ensure. One says, uh, the commission is authorized to make a site visit with staff prior to the hearing. This brought up that lots of us do like to go drive around and see um the applicant sites. I feel like it's kind of our responsibility to do so. But this phrase makes it sound like we're not supposed to drive around without staff.
And what we like to do, sorry, Carl, is have you all together because if, you know, if I go to the site one day and it's raining. And there are puddles, your. Thought about the drainage is going to be different than the person who goes on the day when it's dry. So yes, we like if you're going to have a site visit, that. It be all together. And I think the last time we did that all together was Bell Rippey. Um. Now, it is a small town and um you do drive on the streets and if you, you know, your regular path is to drive. Past this and you see something, um, I I don't think this is intended to prevent that, but it's in. It it is intended to prevent you from specifically going to the site. Sorry, Carl.
No, and I was just gonna follow up on the reasoning for that is when you think about it. Uh, one of the reasons why a site visit should be noticed is so that the applicant can be present and see what you're doing as well as the public. Um, because essentially you're sitting as a judge and you don't really want your judge on your murder case to go out and do their own investigation. And then come into court and say, hey, I did my own investigation and I know none of you all saw what I saw, but you're guilty. Moving on, right? So there needs to be this idea of kind of a fairness and equity and due process. And that's why. Um, as we're coming out of COVID now, um, to the extent that you guys decide you want to do site visits. I think it's important that we do them and that we notice them. Um, you know, can Marco remember back in the day being driven around in a van and doing, you know, site visits and applicants had the opportunity to be there with us. Those site visits. Um, so it is from a fairness standpoint, um, fairly critical because the place and then from my standpoint, process-wise. When you go, hey, I'm making my decision based on this thing I saw when nobody else was there. Uh, and it's a four-three, if I'm, if I want to challenge that decision, either side, it's kind of cannon fodder for me to be able to do that.
I think we did pretty good without it for a long time now.
Yeah, and I mean, I think you guys have. I mean, you generally know town pretty well. And I think the other thing that has changed frankly is the ability to do presentations that are detailed. With lots of imagery that used to not be as readily available, right? Um, electronic photography, everybody, you know. Staff's ability to convey a lot more information and the applicants is much higher than it was twenty years ago.
Agreed.
It was tight and it was always hot in the summer. Very, very hot.
Yeah.
Hey, Carl, I mentioned tonight that I had been through the Western a couple times and it was before I was even on P and Z. Is that an inappropriate comment to make?
Um, I, you know, it didn't, I didn't twitch too much because it actually didn't go into your decision-making. You were just like saying, hey, I know that it's a tough thing and it's it's gonna be a big project. You know, probably I'd be happier if you didn't mention that. Um, because it's not really relevant to your decision. I mean, you were just. Cuz it's not really relevant to your decision. I mean, you were just.
Well, I was in the Western too. And I wanna see the darn tunnel. All right.
We were shopping for things in the Western.
So I got there first. I got there first. It's all my porch. Okay, scrolling down to number ten in that same, under D Rules to Ensure Fairness. I probably just don't know what the strict rules of evidence are and why we don't follow them.
Sure. This is more probably for the benefit of the attorneys that appear in front of you that happen to litigate as well as do land use or primarily litigate. The, there's Colorado Rules of Evidence that apply to my profession when I am in court. And that goes to how evidence is submitted, what weight it has, whether or not it's even admitted or not. If it's hearsay, if there are other things that disqualify it. Land use hearings, typically, everything can come in and you guys decide what weight to give the information that you've been provided. And things don't get excluded like they would underneath the rules of evidence. So this is really more about dealing with, you know, people from my profession who are a pain.
These strict rules are how you assign weight to different evidence, which brings us.
Or not that evidence can even come in, right? So a, a, an example would be, you know, the Failure Delay Foundation for a picture, right? Somebody, somebody submits a photograph. In court, I would have to, you know, have somebody on the stand that said, you know, Mr. Zippelley, do you recognize the image in front of you? Yes, I do. Could you do, you know, were you, could you tell us, you know, how you came by that image? You would be like, well, I took it on my iPhone. I have strictly, you know, adhered to the rules of evidence or my chain of custody is clear. It has not been altered. We go through this whole litany of stuff before that even come in and be considered by the court or the jury. We don't do that in land use cuz it just is, you know, you guys can figure out what's important and what's not. And this isn't like you're sending somebody to the, you know, to the gas chamber, right? Well, you're ma, you're making important decisions, but it's a different weight of evidence that you guys are using.
So, and then we have to weigh the different evidence.
And you do that all the time. You know, you hear testimony and you, you know, you kind of for yourself decide whether or not that testimony should be given lots of weight or no weight. You know, is it an expert? Do they know what they're talking about? You know, is it a valid comment by a neighbor? Is it something that's, you know, maybe not within the bounds of the code? So you just kind of set that aside. You guys do that all the time. So it's not something to really worry too much about. Like I said, it's more directed at my profession so that you don't get attorneys, you know, yelling objection and fan data, you know, there's this whole thing. We could
Okay.
Really make the hearings go slow.
Oh, God, no, no, I don't wanna to get any more drawn out with all that rigmarole that really gets us nowhere. I mean, we sort of trust people to present things that are factual to us and then we do our best to make a good decision based on that. Okay.
Exactly. And that's all this is saying.
Okay, that's, that's much clearer. And that is the last highlight that I have that I wanted to go over here. Thanks for your patience.
Carolyn, will you be willing to send it, that to us? I did take lots of notes. Just to make sure I don't miss anything.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, excellent. Oh, Amber, Commissioner Whissing, please.
Just to back up, I maybe should have stopped her, but I just had one quick question and I guess maybe it's probably for Carl. Under Section One Meetings, Work Sessions, it says the commissions may meet once a month for a work session. Are we limited, for example, if Marco's asking for more work sessions or we're joining commissions and doing maybe two a month plus our meeting or something?
You know.
Hear my question?
I, I do, and I think, I guess I would treat that more as a special meeting than the, the regular work session, those other things. Some nurse is trying to think about his, his schedule right now and how many, how many meetings he can possibly attend in a month.
Depends on the wifi at the campground.
There you go. Okay, thanks. Commissioner White.
Who is our vice chair?
Are you asking me? It's Commissioner Shacter. Sorry.
Okay, yeah.
At this point, yes.
As long as the wifi in the campground is good.
That's correct.
No ego involved if you choose to replace the vice chair.
Not at all. Okay, cool. Any other, any other questions to the bylaws or comments or observations?
I can just say that I will never be up for the vice chair position cuz I can't even make a motion to approve.
Never say never.
I need a script.
Sure you can. You just kind of shot in with the second a bit too soon. You can do it. This is not a problem.
I'll get better. I'll get better.
It took me six months to try and make an emotion, so you just shot.
I have too much moxie then.
I don't think I've ever made a motion. Anyway. So what do we need to do with the bylaws? Nothing, right?
I think we'll just bring it back. I apologize that we still had some things, some work left to do, but we will. We can, since, essentially, it's just kind of cleanup. And we're just returning to the, the rules of the ten PM and the eleven PM, which is the, I think the most salient point for, for everyone.
Right. And, and I'm gonna read it one more time then, when it's all set in stone, seems to be the theme. So, and I'll make sure we'll, we'll play, we'll play like that. So that'll work. Cool. Well, thanks. Hi, Jen. Thanks, Carl. That was it for tonight. New items, all, all wrapped up. Let's go on to Commissioner Comments. And I'm just gonna go down the screen and we're gonna, let's see, Commissioner White.
I still don't really know what this portion, what I'm supposed to say, other than I'm happy that we've had Gretchen and I'm sad to see her move on and I hope we have somebody damn good to replace her.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Zippelley.
I would like to bring up a topic that Marco, you brought up a few months ago and that we are a Planning and Zoning Commission. And I see City Council charging ahead with the South Canyon planning without really consulting the planners. And I don't know how we convince them that we'd like to be involved and in what manner we do be involved because we're hardly ever involved in planning on the front end. But I feel like we have a lot to offer council and I'm wondering how we can get more involved with planning from the get-go instead of seeing things after they're kind of all come up with. And then, of course, my second thing is thank you Gretchen for all your service and I hope it goes well where you go to and then nobody can replace you.
Thank you. Commissioner West.
It was good to be back after a month away. We got some good projects there coming up. Yeah, we'll miss you dearly, Gretchen. For all your help.
Thank you, Commissioner Shacter.
Well, thanks. Again, I'd echo what everybody said about Gretchen. She has made our job way easier. Enjoy. You would have learned everything much quicker if you didn't, if, if you had more of Gretchen's tenure. Two other things real quickly. And Jen, you'd be interested, kudos to the city. I got my broadband today. And both the lineman that came earlier in the week and the installer today did fantastic service and were courteous and followed up and very excited to have city broadband. Thank you. And the third one is a, is a plea. If any of you are willing to help, I took it on. The city has put out a, a fire danger campaign is the best way I can put it. And part of that campaign, we, I have, they printed up a hundred approved, permitted street sign placards that we can put up. I've been going around. I've got some of them distributed already. I've been going around. I'll go around tomorrow. They're very nice signs. If any of you would like to help distribute them in visible places, I'm at twelve oh four Blake. Let me know, message me, or I'll just have a bunch of them back by my garage. I'm leaving again Thursday, Carl. Sorry, but between, but, but the signs will be there. If you wanna pick some up and help distribute them either on your own lawn or in neighborhoods. I could use, use some help getting those out. I'm gonna put some more out tomorrow. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'm there. And Commissioner Whissing.
I'm there. I'm happy to help you with that project. Did you say twelve oh four?
Twelve oh four Blake.
All right, I'll grab some and get some out.
I'll have them out there tomorrow.
You can count on me for South Glenwood. No one should have to drive on Midland if you don't have to. So I got your backs, team. Also, Gretchen, thank you so much for your service. You've been a beacon of excellence and I'm sure a great mentor to all of your staff and you'll be greatly missed.
All right. Thank you, Commission. And I only have one thing and I'd like to bid Gretchen farewell. And I want to wish her all the best and only happiness and good things for wherever you go. And I already forgot, it's the front range. But enjoy it. I hope you'll miss us. I think you will.
Thank you all very much. Yeah, sorry. I, I really appreciate it and I will miss you all as well. Thank you so much. I've enjoyed working with you all over the years.
Thank you, Gretchen. Thank you. And will that, with that, we'll move over into Director's Comments. That'll work.
I was gonna hand it over to Gretchen, but she's. But yes, I think we, we will miss her dearly. And I don't think I have anything else, actually. And I know that the next question is gonna be what's on the agenda.
Well, I, I was thinking maybe we should look at some dates first. Sorry to jump in, but.
Oh, no, that's fine.
The workshops and I know it's summer and I know, you know, summer is never around. So I just wanted to see how the dates are working out. The workshop dates.
We, I think we sent you the.
Got a calendar.
Yeah, we got a calendar event held on your calendars, I think, based on this, that's in the bylaws that's, let me see, I can't find it. One week before the regular meeting date. So I think we went ahead and tried to hold that on your dance card. If it doesn't work in July, we, we understand. I do know that, you know, the kind of the draft agenda is to have those conversations related to kind of formula businesses and kind of retail on the first floor. So a little bit that conversation. And then, as requested, that we would have a Commissioner-directed time. So we do have that on the, see, we do listen, Marco. But if, if that date doesn't work, we can certainly look at another. I think Hannah is gonna help us pull together some information from other codes that may be instructive. And so we will need to also see if Hannah is available. But if the, if the twentieth doesn't work, we can certainly look at another time.
Thank you, Jen. It's, it's a bit ironic. I've been asking for the workshops and I'm gonna miss the first one. So. Yeah, okay, everybody sigh. Let me, let me hear it. There we go. Okay.
I haven't even, I'm only pre-booked for the second one, Carl. Everyone, every other one is open so far.
Okay, I, yeah.
Not gonna make the July meetings or workshop either.
I would love to talk with you guys about what you just said was on the agenda. But if it's already like earlier set in stone, then we gotta, we gotta go with it.
I think we were teasing.
Okay. Well, you know, I don't know. Yeah, I won't be here in the twentieth. I can, I'll definitely be here in the meetings until we get to October and I'll miss both of those. Other than that, I don't know. Let me, let me know, I guess, or, or.
Is there another date in July that you would like for us to, to look at? I mean, we can send out a doodle poll. I just think we struggle sometimes to get responses because you have lots of emails and it's, you know, you also have to have your calendar present when you do this, so.
I don't, I don't want you guys to shift it around for me. Absolutely not. If most of you are here, go for it. Just, you know. Do it. Let me know.
Workshop without Marco.
Are we zooming this workshop?
Well, that was one thought is that I do think that because the work on City Council chambers will have been done. You know, it's possible that we could meet at City Hall for the work session only. I do think that we could try to do it in the third floor conference room. I think that would probably be the preference. We're trying to keep council chambers just for City Council for, for July. So we would have to go back then to Zoom for the twenty-seventh. So I don't know if that would, it would be, it would be a disappointment to have one meeting in person and then to go back to Zoom the next week. So we could.
Yeah.
But there's dinner.
See, there's dinner. I miss that too. I miss everything.
Hey Marco and the rest of, for the, for the record, that week, shockingly, of July twentieth, I think I'm available almost every evening if, if have a convenient reschedule to rope you in.
Like I said, don't, don't reschedule it for me if it's too, too crazy to do. But I'll be back in the twenty-second and I can do the twenty-third. But again, not necessary, you know. So it is, is what it is.
The, the following time, I think we would like to talk about, Counselor Wosso had asked for us to look at kind of water-wise changes related to landscaping requirements. So looking for your input there about, we, I had a few ideas that came immediately to mind about changes that we could make. But obviously, we'd love to have your input related to that top, that topic. So that was sort of the plan that we had for August. And then the, again, the Commissioner-directed kind of comments as well. So could be some discussion that happens on the twentieth. And then maybe there's, you know, more discussion that have, happens on that, that kind of form-based you know, formula, formula business, codes that require retail on the first floor, some of that kind of information could probably carry over. It probably doesn't get all. Not all of the ideas would be explored in one meeting.
Right. Well, I was just, just throwing this out there. If, if the twentieth is gonna be a Zoom, I can probably attend. Because I, well, unless there's no wifi at the campground, but.
So we can, we can resume to the dinner in, in August.
Actually, yes, that's fine. Just figure, figure, let me know. It's all good. The other thing I'm, I'm curious about, I have to follow up quick, is what Carolyn said about the South Canyon. Just not necessarily about that item, but just the item of, of, of the, the issue, but the, the thing about planning, yes, we'd love to help plan. Is this something we will see later as the initial thoughts of council have been formulated and put together and?
South Canyon actually is in unincorporated Garfield County. Maybe not. From a jurisdictional standpoint.
So, okay, okay, then let's, that's what I meant. Let's not refer necessarily to South Canyon. Let's just talk about.
I, you know, I mean, I think that there's probably a couple of large categories of things. Some, and I think historically, when we talked about planning, Marco was a lot around more in the, the large picture, how we wanted to see the city look and what the built environment was going to be like. And honestly, you guys are about to embark on a really intensive project and account plan rewrite, which is your primary responsibility, both statutorily and, and in the code. So I, I think you're gonna have so much planning, you don't know what to do with it.
Extra planning. Okay.
And we haven't, we did get the grant from the Department of Local Affairs. So we are waiting for that contract before we can proceed. And it is, I think we learned in early May, I think, you know, I've had a couple, we provided them the information that they needed about kind of the the finance piece, but we don't have the contract. So we can't really proceed until we have that because we do want that grant money. So I'm trying to get everything in order so that we're very much ready to go when we have that in hand.
And that's about a years long process for the comp plan?
I would say yes. I think with the last time we did it, when we put out the RFP or I think maybe we said it was an RFQ at the time, but we will put out an RFP that it was nine months. I don't know if we achieved that, but that I think is what we put out in the, the request. So, but I would think that it would be longer than that.
I think in the 2011 update, we probably did because there was not a significant amount of rewriting that was done as compared to the 2001, 2000 or 2001 comp plan process. So I, my guy would tell me this is going to be that nine months to a year for you guys to really get it the way you want it. And the amount of public engagement that you want.
Cool.
Oh, we can, do we, as far as formally developing this and public engagement, we reach out to adjacent county property as well that may be affected like Western Springs and Three Mile and places and partly Four Mile. Do they get input?
Um, well, they, they may get some input as well as you thinking about how you want that, how we internally want to see within that planning area. We're kind of required to do that, to think about it. So I think there probably will be some engagement there as well. You know.
There are a couple of sections where we specifically call that out as it relates to water rights in particular. And also the, what Carl's talking about the three mile plan. So there are a couple of areas where we do specifically call that out in the kind of draft that we have going.
Yeah, I think I was asking is if we were going to reach out and have those areas actually comment on what they wanted underneath our plan or not.
Yeah. Great.
All right. Anything else? Last call. See nothing. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.
I'll have signs out by the garage. Thank you. Take me as many as you want. Good night.